In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town qualified to vote in town affairs to meet at the Glenwood Elementary School parking lot at 65 Glenwood Road in Sted Rutland on Saturday, June 27, 2020, at 4:00 PM, then and there, to vote on the following articles.
Thank you very much, Anita. At this time, I will have a prayer of invocation done by Barbara Campbell, my third grade schoolteacher.
Student of the year. Let us begin in the spirit of prayer. God of justice and mercy, we thank you for the gift of life and for the opportunity to be together to serve the people of Rutland. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen to each other with understanding and patience. Help us to speak with charity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service to our neighbors and concern for the common good. Remind us that we are stewards of your creation and of the people who live in our community and all surrounding communities. Guide us to be the leaders and to make important decisions that are helpful to all. Help us to see and affirm the humanity and dignity of those who disagree and to treat all persons with the reverence that is deserved. And finally, Holy God, renew us with your strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of the sacrifice of all those who came before us. We ask this as a community confident in your goodness and love. Amen.
Thank you very much. And at this time, we will have the Star Spangled Banner. And I know it's probably appropriate that we stand up. If you choose to get out of your car and stand up, you're welcome to. But if you, in today's situation, if you'd just like to place your hand over your heart, I would find that to be acceptable. And my singer tonight is going to be Sarah Warsniak. We greatly appreciate her taking time out of saving lives of the fire department tonight, but she's helping us out. Mike had offered to do it tonight, and we had a vote up here. We prefer to listen to Sarah, so thank you.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed At the twilight's last gleaming Whose broad stripes and bright stars Through the perilous fight For the ramparts we watched Were so gallantly streaming And the rocket's red glare The bombs bursting in air Gave proof through the night That a flag was still there Oh, say does that Star Spangled Banner yet wave For the land of the free And the home of the brave?
Thank you very much, Sarah. Obviously, everyone loved you with their horns being beat. So, thank everybody for coming tonight. This is new to us, new to the environment, but under the circumstances in our current situation in America, it's great to be able to have an opportunity to do this. Thank you for being part of the Learning Curve. I'd like to thank all the people up here, and especially Howard Root, for organizing and doing this electronic and getting situated for this meeting. It has been an immense undertaking, but I believe it's going to come off flawlessly. And if you, it's going to go off flawlessly. You're not going to do any differently, all right? We are going to have some test voting going on, and probably, I think I'd like to do some test voting before we do a little bit explaining of some other things that are going on. And hopefully, all our registered voters got a voting, you can't see it, I am holding it up. It's a little white device that has a green and a red button and a yellow button. And my technical people behind us, we're going to put a, under the circumstances, we're going to read, or under normal circumstances, we're going to read the article emotionally made. If there's discussion, you have the opportunity to press the red button or the green button to want to talk. I can know which transponder has come up up here, and I will call you in the order that they come up. And in turn, I have the Boy Scouts from Troop 141 down front, and they will run a mic to you in your vehicle. I prefer if you stay in your vehicle. And the kids will bring you the mics. They will have masks on, and they will wipe mics in between people. We will be patient tonight to get it all. If we can't get you, please either flash your lights or something, and the boys and Mr. Ross will do the best of their ability to get to everybody in a timely fashion. So at this time, if my staff is ready, I would love everybody, I don't, I'm going to, I'm going to ask a question. For all those people that have been at a town meeting before, I would like you to press green. All the people that have not been at a town meeting before, and this is your first town meeting, please press red. You are supposed to have a "OK" come up on your screen, which may take a moment to do it. And if you don't, we may have to move you or check. So please, everyone that has this, and we will know how many people have checked in here, and hopefully everyone will do this, so we can make sure we can have this.
Just press.
All right, we've got excitement happening behind me, and I think it's working.
That's all you need to do.
Is there any cars in the audience that did not get an "OK" or don't think they got their tally? Flash your lights, please. Okay. Have patience. One of Mike's mic boys, go over to the car. Where they're flashing their lights, go over to their car, please, and we want to know what number they are. Right down Row 2, Darren. We have two or three, just to the left of the guardrail. We may need to instruct you possibly, or Zach Lowe, ask what, ask what number transponder they have. On the back of the transponder, there's a number. Folks, just be patient. We are going to, it's going to take a minute. Move to the next vehicle. Darren, do you have a vehicle? Middle of Lot 3, Travis Ross. Lot 3, you have a vehicle over there. Hazards on. Travis, step faster. If you're having a difficult time with a transponder, maybe put it out the window and face it toward us and push it out if it's not working.
Lauren, no heels tonight?
They did do this in Sterling last week, and they did have success. So please be patient. We will get there.
Are we smiling? Are we frowning? Doesn't matter.
If folks, if, if you haven't gotten "OK" and believe you have a problem, raise your red card outside your window, and we can get to you. Right now, just FYI, we have 247 votes that have come up. I have a monitor behind us that, that my technical staff is looking at, that we know what's going on. So we're up to 249. Things are growing. I feel like I'm on the sales channel. If it hasn't come up the first time, you can push it a second time. It was successful for somebody. But that's why it's critical that we see the "OK." So the number is growing to 256. We're doing well.
Actually, that's not fair. It's highly indicative, but it is not certain. Well, that's how many were "OK" so far. I'm wondering how many more there are. They would know how many were panned out.
Is there any in Lot 3 that have concerns? Is there any in Lot 2? Lot 2, do we have any further concerns? Lot 1, any concerns in Lot 1? I know some cars are running, because I do see headlights off. Do the best you can to minimize that, so everybody can hear, and fumes and emissions, but do the best we can, please. All right. So we have a tally right now of 281 ballots have been cast. We have 282. 205 people have been here in the past. We have 70 that have not, which is awesome. Thank you and welcome to our first town meeting. And we have seven that have abstained, that we didn't ask you to abstain, so either you were testing me, or you pushed it accidentally. So at this time, what I would do, is everybody, is there anybody that doesn't think they've been counted yet? Zach Lowe, do you have someone?
Still shorter than counting hands and cards.
All right. So at this time, what I'm going to do in a normal circumstance is I'm going to declare this vote closed, and I will wrap the gavel, and I will announce the results. So the results right now are 204 yeses, 70 noes, and nine abstains. So thank you for that. We're going to do another vote right now, and we're going to try it again. And all those that believe it's not going to rain for the next two hours while we're here enjoying ourselves, please hit "yes." All those that think it's going to rain in the next two hours, please hit "no." I prefer if you did no abstains, press it outside if you can. If it doesn't go through the first time, maybe try it a second time. Turn your hazards on or put your red card outside if you don't think goes on. So we're hopefully going to get about the same number. And I would prefer to have as many, all of you out in front of me, vote. We do have some of our voters out front that are still checking in, so it's not going to be 100% accurate of what has checked in versus here. But we'd like to get about the same number, please. And I appreciate your being patient. FYI, Sterling only had 50 new people, so we're 20 better than Sterling folks. Well, obviously, we're doing better, because we have 320 people that have checked in already. I don't like the odds that are currently in front of the screen. 184 think it's going to rain. I do believe we need the rain, as an agricultural person up here, but I'd prefer for us not to let the counters get wet. I don't want the boys to melt. Is there anybody out there that doesn't think they have a voter that has worked? Please turn your lights on. If not, I will declare this ballot closed. We have 138 yeses and 184 noes and one abstain. So we're getting better. Only one person didn't listen this time, so that was pretty good. So we'll do one more vote.
Everybody abstained.
And just if there's any questions, we have everything entered in, and if we have to have an amendment or change something, the technical staff will have the ability to change the votes behind us to type in a new place of voting to do it. So we have the ability to do that. If we have an amendment tonight, we will have to have it in written form and given to Anita before you leave the parking lot, as usual. I will be courteous tonight to the Select Board or the Finance Board, which are up here with me. If they choose to speech on a subject tonight that is their personal views and not their board views, they will be able to speak from their positions up here as long as they declare it, because we had talked about putting a slip and slide in down the hill to make them go down to the bottom, but some of them didn't think it was appropriate to do that. So as everyone knows, to my right is the Finance, which is a normal position. And the Finance Board that we have with us tonight is Karen Norwell is acting chair tonight. Beside her is Tommy Rochauller. Beside Tommy Rochauller is Ted Purcell. Beside Ted is David Luescher. Beside David Luescher is Carol Martins, which I should do better. She's my neighbor. And beside Carol is Peter O'Malley. To my direct right is Anita Carlson, who is a town clerk. To my left is Town Council, which is Warren Goldberg. Beside her is the new Mayor of Gardner, Michael Nicholson, future president probably, too, maybe. A lot of beeps there. Good job. And then we have this, he's blushing if everybody can't see him. He is pretty red right now. Two, two mics left is Leah Whitman, Whitman, close Sheila Dibbs, Jeff Stillings, Mitch Rvezzi. Rizziti. I was close. And our newest selectman is Lyndon Nichols, beside Mitch. And then the blue tent is the table folks that are filming and, and doing their very best. And to the tent behind the blue tent is a white tent, and those are department heads over there, so they're able to speak up here if they're needed to do all that. We also have Howard Root with us of Technical Team and Damian to help with technical stuff as well. And then we have the boys down front by Lot 2 sign that are helping with our runners. And Mr. Ross is their keeper tonight, who's walking around. And then we also have the fire department here, and the highway department here, and the police force here, all to have one big festive event. So I appreciate everybody coming out and, and joining us on this. So at this time, we're ready to have another vote, and this will be our final practice vote. All those people that think Mike is going to win in Gardner, please hit green. All those that Mike thinks he's going to lose and stay in Rutland full-time, please hit red. Whoops, no votes came in. Oh, wow. That goes up really fast. Numbers are going up well. It looks like all your voters are counting. So again, if they don't work, please place them outside your window or hit them again. So at this time, does anybody have trouble that need help? If so, turn your hazards on or put your one out. Boy Scouts, I would like one of you boys in each lane, so you can watch the people as we start anyways, please. So that means one of you have to go to Lot 1, please. And maybe one of you, one of you go toward the back to watch the back row. Maybe Travis goes in the back or something to watch the back row, maybe. So I'd like to declare this ballot closed. For FY purposes, there was 199 votes cast "yes" that Mike's going to win in Gardner. 110 of them, you want them to lose so he stays in Rutland. And 12 of you haven't made up your mind yet. So thank you for that. I declare the ballot closed. Mike has won Gardner. Mayor race. Is it that easy, Mike? I can go to Gardner and run a meeting if you'd like. All right. So folks, at this time, I would like to have Mike say a few words about his campaign win in Gardner, please. No, I'm being sarcastic there, Mike. Can you say a few words about the start of the meeting, please?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. That was great. I would like to thank everyone who put a lot of time and effort into this meeting to get all of the logistics put in place. This is nothing like anyone has ever seen before. And in fact, when we announced that we were having this, I had about four, between four and six different municipalities across the state ask for the plan because they wanted to copy us. So we're trendsetters here in Rutland, which is great. In particular, I'd like to thank our two chiefs, Chiefs at night from the Fire Department and Chief Nick Monaco from the Police Department, our DPW Director Joe Buckley, our town clerk staff, Anita Carlson and Damian Bartek, and Howard Root, for all of the work they put into this. This took a lot of work to get done, and we should give credit where credit is due. So if you can join me in a honk your horn of applause here. Things should be pretty straightforward. For those of you who have a packet, you have the one article followed by the motion that will be read and then explanation of each motion. Those of you who did not get a packet, flash your hazards. If you have a question, in which case the Boy Scouts will go to your car with a microphone, and we can ask those questions that way. And if there are any issues, flash your hazards, and we will send someone to your car. That should be most of the logistics for the meeting, since we just went over the voting. And thank you very much.
At this time, I would like to ask Anita to say a few words, please.
Good evening, everybody. Well, we had our annual town election on Monday, and once final results were in, when the write-in ballots and the hand-counted ballots were tabulated, it resulted in a tie between two of the candidates. The candidate who received the most votes was sworn in earlier this week and is sitting up here with the rest of the board. A tie vote is considered a failure to elect and allows a sitting member to remain until a successor qualifies, which basically means wins the most votes and gets sworn in by, takes the oath of office. One of the candidates has taken out recount papers. We hope to have them back at the beginning of the week, and once they're returned, we will be scheduling a recount vote. And at this time, we're, we're hoping to be able to do so at 10:00 AM on Wednesday, July 8, but we'll, we'll keep everybody informed if, if that has to change. Thank you.
Typical housekeeping rules tonight. Please keep your horn beeping to a minimum. I just don't want to irritate people or problems, but if you have to get our attention, that probably is acceptable. If there's an emergency to get out, please use caution, but we will do our very best to get you out immediately. I would encourage everyone to stay for the entire meeting. I will do my very best to get people in and out of here as quickly as possible to get through our articles we have. There is only 17 articles here in front of us. If inclement weather comes in, we have the ability to lump some of them together if we choose to as a body to do it. If you need a question, that will take the longest, but if we can modify the ability to do questions, as I stated earlier, if you choose to have discussion on the article, and you can hit a green button or the red button to have discussion, I will know that up here, and I will know transponder-wise, on the back of your transponder, there is a number that is on the back of your transponder, and I will call out your number. Number one, please talk, or, you know, and the boys will get to you with a mic to do it as timely as we possibly can. That may take a little bit longer time to do that. And so if you do have a question, we're going to limit discussion really to one speak per person. So try to be at your very best to get it done. If you have a follow-up or something like that, we will allow that. But we will try to do the best we can to do one speak per person, just because it's such a large quantity for the kids to cover with their mics. Otherwise, I think we're ready to get going. Is there any questions or technical questions? I would assume everybody can hear me via of the mics or their vehicles. Obviously, through the voting process, that should have happened. So at this time, I'm going to start with Article 1, unless there are some questions to do that. All right. So we'll get started with Article 1. To see, to see if the town will vote to appropriate or transfer from available funds, including free cash, the sum of money to the snow and ice supply account 001-423-5400 for the fiscal year 2020, or take any action in relation there, too?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate from free cash the sum of $31,362.97 to the snow and ice supplies account 001-423-5400 for fiscal year 2020.
Second, a motion has been made in second. Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? And I'm trying to look for you right now. If you have discussion, I need you to hit a red button or a green button, please. And I will ask three times, and I will be patient. Boys, please look for people to flash or hold their hand or card outside. The boys can get you. At this moment, I have no transponders that have come up. Oh, I do. I'm sorry. So 174, 229, 314, 315. We've got others coming up. Please, boys, get the mic to somebody. Identify yourselves so the kids can get to you with the mics, please, folks. Put your lights on. This is, you're not voting yet. This is only discussion. Can we, can we reset? Folks, do we have anybody that wants to talk on this article? If so, please beep your horn. Okay, folks, did the folks that hit the button think they were going to vote? If so, please beep your horn. Okay. So what, what, what my request was, I wanted you to hit your button if you wanted to have discussion. So we're not going to vote, and I will make it very clear when to vote. So we're going to clear this again, please. So at this time, is there any discussion? So at this time, is there any discussion? Open discussion. I'm looking for the transponders behind me, or a red card out the window, please. Okay, so at this time, is my normal procedure. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any more discussion? That's just a tradition, folks. If not, we are going to vote. Very clear, we're gonna do this once, folks, unless we have technical difficulty. All those in favor, please hit the green button. All those opposed, please hit the red button. We will be patient, and we're gonna get a number greater than 300. And then I will declare it closed unless you beep your horn at me and don't think you got a tally. But we're hoping that you get an okay by placing it out the window, or hitting it twice. The computer is thinking. We're over 300 now. I'm just being patient. Has everyone got an okay? If not, please beep your horn. Please go to the vehicle with a horn beeping, please. Put your card out, because they can't remember which horn beeped. Horn would just, uh, make it easier for everybody to do it. Right now, we have 323 total votes. We're doing extremely well, folks. Is everybody good? Everybody thinks they got voted? Please beep your horn. If you don't think you got voted. I declare this ballot closed. We have 321 yeses, we have five noes, and we have one abstain. Motion carries. We're moving on to Article two. Moving on to Article two, to see if the town will vote to transfer from the appropriate appropriations made under Article 13 of the November 14th, 2019 special town meeting, a sum of money for the purpose of repairs to the kitchen and the exterior doors of the community center, including all incidentals and related expense, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mister Moderator, I move that the town to transfer from the appropriation made under Article 13 of the November 14th, 2019 special town meeting, the sum of $4,036 for this purpose of repairs to the kitchen and exterior doors of the community center, including all incidental and related expenses.
A motion has been made and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Mister Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? If, if there's any discussion on this article, please hit a, the green or red button, please. Okay, we have two people that pushed buttons, please. Please identify yourself, and the kids will come to you with a mic. Put your red card out the window, please. Beep your horn if you have discussion. You don't have discussion, you accidentally pushed the button. Is that correct? Does anybody choose to discuss? If so, beep your horn. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? If not, we will cast your ballot. All those in favor, please hit the green button. All those opposed, hit the red button.
Whether those folks in the white car aren't counting, aren't voting, or have really good ballots. They could be, well, they're also different enough, so it's possible. But all.
We're over 300. All cast ballots to choose to. Everybody got an okay? Anybody that doesn't, please beep your horn. I declare the ballot box closed. 291 in favor, 28 opposed, zero abstain. Moving on to Article three. We're gonna get the hang of this by the end of the night, folks. Thank you for being patient. To see if the town will vote to appropriate from available funds, including free cash of sum of money to the public safety building purchase service line, 001-192-5200-005, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mister Moderator, I move that the town appropriate the sum of $6,000 from free cash to the public safety building purchase services line,
Second. Yeah, recommendation of the Finance, please.
Mister Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? If so, I'm gonna ask you to beep your horns, because obviously, we're having some difficulty, um, with people hitting the button, maybe accidentally. So if you have discussion, please beep your horn. Is there any discussion? Beep your horn. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, please press green or red. No, strike that. All those in favor, press green. All those opposed, press red. I am sorry. Folks, FYI, until the ballot is closed, if you choose to change your ballot, if you voted, for example, you hit yes and you meant to hit no, you can change until I tell it's closed. The computer will ha, allow you to hit the, change your vote if you choose to. You won't vote twice. If you hit green once, and then you go and hit red, the red will supersede the green. All voted who choose, I will declare the ballot box closed. We have 304 yeses, 12 noes, and two abstains. These are the fastest counters I've ever had. We're moving on to Article four. To see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money from available funds, including free cash for signage at the intersection of Wachusett Street and East County Road, including all incidental or related expenses, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mister Moderator, I move that the town appropriate the sum of $15,750 from free cash to purchase signage for the intersection of Wachusett Street and East County Road, as recommended by the Director of Public Works in the study by Ty and Bond Engineering, including all incidental and related expenses.
A motion has been made and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Mister Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Please beep your horns. Okay, boys, turn your hazards on or put your window, your hand out the window. Runners, run. Back corner, lot two.
Yeah, 10 and 11. 10, 11, 12, yes.
You have one in lot two, boys, in the center aisle. Get there quickly. Two in lot two. Darren, could you pick up the pace, please? Okay, turn the mic on. Go ahead. Brent, you got the mic? Please identify yourself, name, address, and number of your transponder when you talk, please.
Yep. Joe Becker, uh, transponder 156, 18 Crestview Drive. First question is, what is, what is the beginning balance of free cash before any money is spent tonight? And second question is, the explanation on the paperwork explains that this would be phase one of the work at the intersection? What is, how many phases are there, and what is the total cost of all phases?
Mister Moderator, the beginning balance of free cash before any articles is $432,443.00. If it is alright with you, I'd like to ask that Director Buckley respond to the second half of that, even though he is not a resident of the town. Thank you.
I believe there would be no opposition from any townspeople to at least listen to Mr. Buckley speak. Mr. Buckley?
It's on.
Do you have a mic?
Yeah, I got it.
Can you hear me? Yes, you sound great.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for your patience. In response to Mr. Becker's question, um, the engineer Ty and Bond proposed three or four options with how to manage that intersection. Some are more expensive than others. The immediate was the signage. I do not have a cost in front of me for phase two. It's mostly paving and striping, and it'll probably be done with chapter 90 money, but we don't have a firm estimate tonight. Sorry about that.
Mr. Becker, has that answered your questions to the best of Mr. Buckley's ability? We're gonna assume yes. Next question. Thank you, Mr. Becker. Next question. Name, number, address, please. Be ready to go, boys.
Can you hear that? Matthew Lavoy, 28 Grizzly Drive, number 300. Just a follow-up to Mr. Becker's question. Has that phase two included rumble strips for the intersection? And if it has, if it has, is there an estimate as to, rough estimate if we were to modify this motion to include that?
Mr. Buckley, did you hear the question?
I did hear the question, and no, there were no rumble strips included in the engineer's proposal. Phase two mostly consists of, um, updated paving, new painting, and striping. Uh, the, the, the cost that drives that up is, is the cost of the new asphalt. Uh, but no one, the engineer did not recommend rumble strips at all, no.
Did that answer your? Is there any other questions? If so, beep your horn, please. Do you have a question over here in lot one, I believe? Raise your hand, please. There we go. Silver car, front row. Come on, Sumner, quicker. Yes, Mr. Kanakioli.
Pacer, uh, 20 Highland Park Road, transponder number 58. On this article.
The mic is off.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can now.
Okay. Is there any way we can use unused free cash if we vote any of these articles down to be used to fund the Wachusett Regional School Budget?
Alright, folks, I'm gonna ask nicely that we keep that horn beeping to a minimum, because it makes it very difficult to move along in a timely fashion. Who's gonna answer that question? Town Administrator's gonna answer the question.
Thank you, Mister Moderator. To answer the question as to whether, uh, free cash can be used to fund the Wachusett Regional School District budget, uh, we are currently already planning for Article, uh, Article 10 and Article 11, which is just the general town budget, uh, to use $200,000 of unused free cash to fund the Wachusett Regional School Budget at this time. Uh, the Department of Revenue recommends not using free cash to fund budgetary expenditures. Uh, we have been doing that traditionally here in the town as part of the financial policies that were previously passed by the Finance Committee in the Board of Selectmen, uh, in order to maintain adequate services to our residents without reduce, um, with the financial constraints that we are currently in, uh, which is why we are using $200,000 of our unused free cash to fund budgetary operations, uh, next year as proposed in this warrant. However, uh, as I said, um, the finance team of the Town of Rutland doesn't recommend going any more than that, since we are actually already going $50,000 over what our financial policies recommend, which already go against the recommendations of the Commonwealth Department of Revenue. Thank you.
Is there any other questions? Is that a question, or? We got cards flying there. Come on.
George Curritzy, transponder 281. It's a very dangerous intersection. Um, very glad that the town's doing something to take care of it.
Is there any other questions? Is there any other questions? Is there any other questions? Hearing no other horns beeping for question. I am going to open voting. All those in favor, please hit the green button for yes. All those opposed will be the red button. The votes are being tallied right now. The next ballot, um, for discussion, if we can try to hit the button, only if we have discussion in the beginning, and then we know how many people have to talk, it may be easier than trying to beep the horn to do that. We may put your card out the window to attach, but please do not hit your button unless you have discussion, because it causes a little confusion up here, because in the beginning, people hit their buttons where they probably thought they voted, please. We'll try that. We'll do, to get our attention, we can do the horn, or if there is no, we can do it that way. So at this time, I want to declare the ballot closed. The count is 253 yeses, 71 noes, one abstain. Motion carries. Moving on to Article five. To see if the town will vote to transfer from the appropriations made under the Article 25 on May 14th, 2011 town meeting, a sum of money for the purpose of repairs to the water filtration tanks, including all incidental or related expenses, or take actions in relation, relation thereto.
Mister Moderator, I move that the town transfer from the appropriation made under Article 25 of the May 14th, 2011 town meeting, the sum of $100,685.02 for the purpose of repairs to the water filtration tanks, including all incidental and related expenses.
A motion has been made and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Mister Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable on this article.
Is there any, if there's any discussion, please hit your transponder, so I know it up here. Please beep your horn as well after you hit the transponder, if there's any discussion. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? There is one person that has discussion, please beep your horn. Please beep your horn. 183, please identify yourself. 183, please identify yourself. We're assuming that it was an accident, and you don't choose to identify yourself. Is there any further discussion? If there is, please beep your horn. Otherwise, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please hit the green button in favor of, red button against. against.
Mine just did that thing to us before A popped in.
Because it's before she started to vote. That's what it is. I just did it, too, and then I noticed the little flashing R afterwards. R means registered, that it's actually talking, so it's not talking to it until it's registered. So the vote has to be open for, for it to be a yes.
All ballot as you wish. We have over 300. I'm going to declare the ballot box closed. If there is a problem, please beep before I hit my gavel. Otherwise, the ballot is closed. There is 266. Ballot is closed. 266 in favor of, 35 noes, two abstained. Motion carries. Moving on to Article Six, to see if the town will vote to transfer from the appropriations made under Article Seven of May 9, 2015 town meeting, a sum of money for the purpose of conducting CCTV work and record productions for sewer lines, including all incidental or related expenses or take any action in relation there, too.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer from the appropriation made under Article Seven of the May 9, 2015 town meeting, the sum of $30,017.02 for the purpose of conducting CCTV work and records production for the sewer lines, including all incidental and related expenses.
Does this, a motion has been made and seconded recommendation of the finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable on this article.
I'm going to try this again. Is there any discussion? Please hit your green button. If you have discussion, I will know it up here on the monitor, and please beep your 221, please beep your horn if you have a question. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Please beep your horn if you have discussion. Hearing none. I will now open voting. All those in favor, please hit the green button for yes. All those opposed, please hit no. Red, no. It's the same thing on the remote. I'm trying to make it less confusing. All right, we have 309. If all voted, who chooses to, I will declare the ballot box closed unless you beep the horn. The ballot box is closed. Ballots are 253 yeses, 59 noes, one abstained. Thank you. Moving on to Article Seven. Moving on to Article Seven to hear the annual reports from the town offices and committees.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to hear the annual reports of the town officers and committees.
Motion made and seconded recommendation of the finance.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorably on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify yes, your green button. No, your red button, please.
Do you keep the camera back here? Yeah, okay. Thank you. I'm already thinking about how.
All voted who wish, I don't mean to turn my back. All those who have voted, I will declare the ballot box closed. 249 yeses, 50 noes, nine abstained. Motion carries. And the annual town report is currently posted on our website. They are being printed, and they will be out shortly, be able to be picked up at different locations in town or the town hall. We just, under the circumstances with Corona, we didn't want to pass them out at elections like normal, so we delayed a little bit on that process is the reason that they weren't available. Moving on to Article Eight, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning, the town's zoning bylaw by inserting the section entitled agricultural accessory use as set forth in the handouts entitled June 27, 2020 Annual Town Meeting Proposed Zoning Bylaw Changes, Article Eight also on file with the town clerk or take any action in relation there, too. This does require a two-thirds vote.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve Article Eight as printed in the warrant.
A motion has been made and seconded recommendation of the finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? We have one horn. Please put your card out so the boys can identify you. Middle row, silver car. Thank you. Boys are doing a great job. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, Secman, 13 Beachwood Drive, number 99. According to the use provisions under allowable accessory uses through you to the planning board, I see it states down here winery tours, wine tasting, brewery tours, and beer tasting. Does that mean that the allowable, I believe it's up to five acres that they can carve out of their farm for these allowable accessory uses, will they indeed be commercial properties then and allowable for the regular tax base as a business? Or will they be able to run a business and still take the advantage of the tax base as a farm?
Do we have a, Mr. Secman asked for the planning board to answer that. Mike probably can answer it. He was going to turn his mic on. I don't, do we have a planning board that can handle a mic? Are we okay, Mr. Secman, are we okay if I let the town planner speak where he is up here with me?
If you can answer the question, that would be great.
Dave, can you answer the question?
Sure, thank you.
I believe you have a mic. You don't need to stand. You can sit if you'd like.
So, and we appreciate that question. So the intent of this bylaw is that if there's a principal use, that's agriculture to begin with, that these uses would be allowable if they are accessory to that principal use. So these would be uses that relate directly to the prime use of a given site as an agricultural use. The important thing here to note, I think, is that a significant portion of the products sold have to be prepared or grown with crops grown or raised on the site.
Mr. Moderator, that was part of the answer. Could he provide the answer on the tax base? Does it come out of farm tax base and go into commercial tax base? Or does the individual who's running a commercial business on the property still take advantage of the reduced tax base as a farm?
Right, so because there's a principal use of agriculture occurring at the site to begin with, and because the use which you cited is accessory directly related to the principal use, the operation would continue to be taxed as an agricultural use, not as a commercial use per se because of the agricultural exemption that applies in the first place to that particular parcel.
Mr. Moderator, I state my objection to this, and I think it should be refined and rewritten, that no commercial use for a brewery or winery should be able to be taxed exempt under farm property. Thank you. And I vote no on this one.
Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, we will now vote. All those in favor, please signify by hitting the green button for yes. No would be the red button, please. This will be two-thirds, but we will not have to take a manual count because we're counting on the accuracy of the tally voters, which is actually saving us time tonight. We have 232 yeses, we have 82 noes, we have 10 abstained. According to my math, my computer hasn't told me this yet, this has passed two-thirds majority. Motion carries. Moving on to Article Nine, to see if the town will vote. Just a moment, folks, we're doing technical difficulty.
You can either double the noes.
Double the lesser number, and if it's less than that, you should be right.
The technical difficulty was the computer thinks it didn't pass, but it, for whatever reason, it's reading a little differently. So as I stated, there was 232 yeses, and there was 82 noes, so certainly that's more than two-thirds. So as I stated before, and I will restate again, Article Eight has passed two-thirds and favorable. Moving on to Article Nine, at this time, the Finance Board has asked to read a letter first before I read the article.
The Finance Committee, with the help of department heads, the town administrator, and the town accountant, are proposing a balanced budget to you this evening. In order to balance this budget, we followed state recommendations in boosting our anticipated town revenue receipts by $85,000. This was done so that the town would avoid being in a situation where 1/12 budget spending would occur, thus preventing our departments to provide the services required for our townspeople. As the state's budgeting process is still in the early stages, and the full impact of the global pandemic is not currently known, we are expecting to be coming back to you in the fall with changes to this budget. Potential changes that we may see in the fall would be further cuts, further cuts to the budget using stabilization to fund the potential shortfall, or potentially using the CARES Act funding if legislation allows.
At this time, I will read the Article Nine, to see if the town will vote to raise such sums of money as may necessary to defray the expenses of the Southern Worcester County Regional Vocational School Assessment for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020, and to determine whether the town will appropriate money therefore to be provided by taxation or by appropriation from available funds, or take any action in relation there, too.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $574,578 to defray the expenses of the Southern Worcester County Regional Vocational School Assessment for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020.
Second, motion has been made and seconded recommendation of the finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion in this article? Hearing no horns, we will proceed to vote.
But if I don't hear the horn, I think they're doing that action.
We do have some people hit the monitor, but if you don't beep your horn, I'm not going to recognize you. I think that's just a possible mistake. So if I hear no horns, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we will now proceed to vote. All those in favor, please press green for yes, red for no. We are over 300. I'm going to declare the ballot box closed unless someone chooses to beep the horn. I declare the ballot box closed. There are 249 in favor, there are 54 opposed, and there are three that abstained. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 10. Moving on to Article 10, to see if the town will vote to raise such sums of money as may be necessary to defray the expenses of the Wachusett Regional School District Assessment for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020, and to determine whether the town will appropriate money therefore to be provided by taxation or by appropriation from available funds, or take any action in relation there, too.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $13,198,428.02 to defray the expenses of the Wachusett Regional School District Assessment for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020.
Second, motion has been made and seconded recommendation of the finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends unfavorable on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? We have one horn. Please raise your card or, over in the right lane. Put your cards out the window. You have one over here in Lot Three, please.
Shane Haber, number 205, one Olivia Lane. Today, I am asking you to vote to pass our school budget. I'm not asking you to take away municipal services. I want you to recognize that the school district is one of your municipal services. Even if you don't have children in our schools right now, the strength of our system directly affects your property values and, more importantly, the future of our town's children. As of right now, we have pink slipped 54 teachers with the possibility of losing 140 total teachers and staff. With the sheer size of this loss, class sizes will increase, making our upcoming school year an almost impossible year an almost impossible feat, trying to accommodate social distancing. We may lose music programs, middle school and high school sports, and middle school foreign language. Add to that math, English, and social studies teachers, special education teachers, and paraprofessionals. This year is unprecedented. The schools are looking at a 20% reduction in state aid. Passing the town's portion by all member towns would provide $3.4 million towards the projected $10.4 million shortfall. I can't guarantee you exactly where that money will be spent right now. Much of that will depend on how much state aid we end up with. What I can tell you is that I will push to make our schools whole. I'm committed to transparency in our system and will answer any questions that I can. I encourage you to pass our budget today and take a step in the right direction, as was done in Sterling and in Princeton earlier today. I also encourage you to contact your state and federal legislators to help us fund our schools and in turn, our town.
Could you please state your name, address, and phone number again, because we have some background noise up here, we're not able to hear you. Yeah, not your phone number, I meant your clicker number. Darren, I need her name and address, please. Yes, we could, we could not hear you from the background noise, that's all.
Sherry Haver, number 205, one Olivia Lane.
Thank you very much. Next person, please.
Sean Kelleher, A Jackson Ave, clicker 203. Hello, I am proud to say that I'm a 2020 Waukesha graduate. Over the last 13 years, I've attended school in the Waukesha District, and I have to say, over those years, I have learned so much thanks to the amazing teachers and staff at the schools. Every single staff at the Waukesha District has worked tirelessly to help their students grow and provide a place where students can reach their highest potential. Education is extremely important to the lives of children, and having a proper education sets up their lives for the future. As Michelle Obama said, the ability to read, write, analyze, the confidence to stand up and demand justice and equality, the qualifications and connections to get your foot in the door, all start with education. After hearing about the budget cuts that are coming to the schools, I am sad to say that kids will no longer be getting a proper education. By cutting teachers, class sizes will grow, and a crucial part of a child's education will be lacking, and this includes the arts. Growing up, I really struggled in school, and in third grade, I was diagnosed with dyslexia. There were many times in school when I thought I should just give up, and reading and writing was impossible. But thanks to my wonderful teachers and parents, helped me realize that reading and writing was possible, and then I could do anything I put my mind to. By cutting the teachers and parents, kids' needs will not be met. They will have too much on their plate, and students like me will not be given proper attention. I would hate to think what would happen if I was in the situation and not be given the proper support. By increasing class sizes, teachers will no longer be able to give students running more support, and classes will become chaotic. Teachers will not be able to manage the large number of students. It will be hard for students to focus, and the outcome will be a lack of understanding and knowledge. We cannot let this happen. We need to make sure class sizes are cut down so students and their needs can be met. Having loud noises in classroom is going to be the result if you cut the number of teachers. And I just have to think, what would I, what would ha- would happen to me if I had to handle this situation? We cannot forget about those kids who have learning disabilities, and who have so much potential but don't have the resources to realize it. One of the main parts of the budget cuts comes, that makes me so sad, is getting rid of the arts. And this means music classes. This sickens me. How can we take away vital classes like music? They help students be creative and think outside the box. Without them, students will be, will not be given tools they need to succeed. Speaking from personal experience, if I was not able to have music, I would have failed. I could not have sat in the classroom all day, and I would have given up. How, it would have been too hard for me. They need to create a, a time of the day where they can relax and their mind can run wild. By depriving students of music, you are depriving them for success later in life. I understand that this is a difficult time that we are going through, and we are going through a financial crisis, but why should students be the ones to suffer? Why should their education be on the line? If I, if I was given this form of education, I don't know if I would have been an honored student in high school, or I'd be attending college in the fall. Education is too important to put in jeopardy. As Malcolm X said, "Education is the, is the passport to the future." But tomorrow belongs to those who prepare for it today. We need to look to the future. How will cutting the, cutting education affect kids for the future? We need to take a lot of consideration into these budget cuts, because you are illuminating role models in the life of children. You are getting rid of teachers who put so much into their job and give everything to their students. Education is the cornerstone of a person's life, and it sets a person up for who they are going to be. Protect the education of students, protect our teachers.
We have the next person that chooses to talk, please. Test one, two. It's a circle. We didn't hear your name.
Yeah, I, I knew I was in trouble. So, Anthony Defon, 45, Vista Circle, transponder, set three. One of the foundations, obviously, of any community is its educational system, and by hello? That, so that foundation of any town is our educate, and by extension, our students. Hello?
You know which mic that is? So it could be ours if it did, guys.
Test one, two.
Third time's a charm. So, what I wanted to ask was, in light of the current status of school, and all the turbulence that's given within light of COVID to our students and their educational process, uh, I think this would be a massive detriment. And I would like to know from someone on the Finance Committee, given that, not only would this be a detriment to cut anyways, but in light of the current status of our world and our education, if someone on the Finance Committee could please articulate as to why you are advising negatively against this, it would be great to hear that justification, because I cannot for the life of me come up with one.
The Finance Committee recommends unfavorable on this, as our town services are level-funded. They are not able to do what they would like to be able to do, and it's a very big stretch for all of our department heads sitting over there. It hurts the town's services.
Can you restate that, sir? We didn't hear all of that. You gotta put it closer to your mouth, sir, we didn't hear any of that, please. Test one, two. Hold it closer to your mouth, maybe, sir?
I try not to stick it down into my mouth, but I'll try my best.
I'm sorry.
You know, it's kind of gross. But anyway, so, it's always, given that, the negative impact that the light current status of the world has on our kids, this will make it even worse and exacerbate an already tough situation, so I would like some specifics as to what things you feel are okay to cut in our education system now that won't hurt our children, and how you can go to bed at night saying that's okay to do that.
Hey, folk, folks, if we kept, it's great that we're beeping our horn to show support for the gentleman speaking, but to keep things moving along, it's easier if you just maybe wave your hand, thinks everybody's deaf, maybe. Let Karen speak on behalf of the Finance, please.
Back in November, all five towns got together and decided that a, that we were going to send a message to the schools that a three and a half percent increase was going to be acceptable. We got a significantly larger increase, and that does hurt our services.
Is there any other discussion?
Good afternoon, my name's Jeff Haynes, Four Williams Circle, I'm also on the committee. Uh, I, I am going to start with the good news, because that's how I wrote my speech. Start with the good news first. Today, we can soften the economic hit our schools will take this coming year, and we can do that by approving the budget. I do want to respond to the comment about the other, uh, departments that are level-funded. We're looking at a 10.4 million hit, so level-funded would be, uh, that'd be lovely. Who would love that? Uh, 10.4 million hit versus level-funded, who wouldn't? So, the fact is, our schools, like a couple of schools across the state, get a large proportion of their funding from the state. So when state revenues take a hit, so do the schools. The damage for us is painfully clear, with 54 pink slipped teachers already, the threat of losing 140 positions in all. You just won't find other departments in town that are facing similar levels of devastation. You're not going to see it. And yet, this is the only article today on our municipal services lacking the official thumbs up from the town. I really doubt anyone's surprise. While we could say, I'll simply say this. I do hope, in my time on the committee, I can help erase some of the bitterness between the town and the district. It really needs to happen, that's long overdue. As we come together here as a town, here at Glenwood, just like we do every spring, it should be obvious that our schools are as much a part of Rutland as Town Hall, the library, DPW, community center, police, and fire, the faculty, staff, and children at Naquad, Glenwood, and Central Tree, and the 185 full-time district employees who live here in Rutland. We are all part of the same town. To everyone who can see that, and it's literally right in front of us, thank you for the support.
By, by town meeting times.
Someone's talking to me, but I can't see, I'm sorry.
Hello, Mary Jordan, 51 Muscat Park Road. I would like to ask, oh, and I'm sorry, my, um, clicker is number 28. I would like to ask the Finance Committee member who responded to the gentleman about two questions ago, what town services would be specifically affected if this vote went Every single municipal department was affected on this budget. Every single municipal services were affected. The library, the fire department, every single one. Um, thank you for that, but can you be a little more specific? Because that statement as being made, I think, besides myself, others might want to know, and I'm sure research has been done, on what exactly would be affected? And I think it would be important to, to know that. There are departments within the town that need extra people or would like extra people, they're not able to get them, they're having to do more with less. We have departments such as the DPW that need, um, maintenance, uh, machinery, and they're not able to get that. It's literally every department, guys. I could be here for hours going over what, what's been cut.
Is there anybody else that has discussion on this article? We have a red card over here in Lot One. Out, black car, we have a blue car as well. Two in the back row as well, there's a couple hands flying over there, please.
Michael Pratt, 13 Crossings Way. Um, a couple things for the Finance Committee, uh, teachers constantly, constantly do less with more. So, to say that the town wants to do, they're, they're all struggling up there, teachers day in and day out do less with more. In this past three months, they've done 10 times more with so much less. And in addition, is something that was mentioned earlier, you talked about the services that the town does? The students are the greatest number of kids that we service. They're the number one priority. They're the ones that we service the most.
There's cars in the back, there's a couple cars in Lot Three.
So they don't have the second mic, our second mic, they've got two of ours over ours.
Mr. Moderator.
Darren, could I, Darren's at the school.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
Mike Sullivan, Crawford Road, um, clicker number 97. You know, I don't think there's anyone here that doesn't support education of kids. And I, and I've heard the question asked, what would the impact be on local government? And it seems like every time we have an annual town meeting, it's, it's the schools against the towns, and it's a shame that's come to that, and I don't know how that will ever change, but I heard the question asked, what impact be to the municipal government? And I, I gotta believe there's a more specific answer than every, uh, department. So my, my specific question is, what percentage of an impact will it have on each department if this budget passes?
I'd like to have all of you guys get up and stand up and tell what's going to affect your departments, please, because I can't list it.
Just a moment, my Finance board clerk is walking.
It doesn't have, what you guys, what, what this is going to do to affect it, because I don't have the minutes.
I haven't seen a detailed budget, I can't help it.
Mike is going to answer, Mike, our town administrator, is going to answer this best he can.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The initial budget proposals that we received from our town department heads, uh, back in February, when budgets were first submitted to now, we have cut the proposed budget by about $750,000. Uh, that is across all departments, that includes, um, increased costs due to things like the lockbox in the town clerk's, uh, excuse me, the town treasure collector's office, that includes staffing for the DPW, some that was moved into the different utility accounts, um, different, um, supplies items were cut down to, uh, levels lower than this year. Uh, the general reduction is just from what was initially asked by the departments to the budget that was, the balanced budget that was proposed this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
Jeff Sterling's Lord Lane, I'm going to make a motion to call a question.
So the question has been moved, this does take a ballot, and this is two-thirds. This is two-thirds, so we will vote on moving the question. There is no discussion on this. I need a second. So, by, by this vote that Mr. Stillings has made is going to allow us to take the vote and end discussion. It doesn't change, this is not how you're voting on this particular article. All it's doing is ending discussion or any further debate. And then we will have a vote. So, to, i- if this passes favorably, two-thirds, then we will have a vote, uh, on the particular article. All right? Does this motion have a second? Mitch has seconded it for us kindly. Now, we're going to vote on moving the question. So, and all you're voting on is just moving the question, just to eliminate the debate. This has nothing to do with the particular school budget under Article 10. This is only to move the question. Are we ready, IT? IT is ready to vote to receive your votes. All those in favor of ending debate, please hit the green button. All those opposed, please hit the red button. This does take a two-thirds vote to end debate. I'm going to declare the ballot closed on ending debate. We have three, 246 yeses, 74 nos, one abstained, a total of 321 votes. Motion wins. We will end debate and we'll take the vote. Pass two-thirds. So, so everyone understands, we are now voting on Article 10. Everyone understands what Article 10 is? All those in favor of passing Article 10, please hit the green button for yes, the red button for no. This is only a majority vote on Article 10. I am going to declare the ballot box closed. We have 261 yeses, 61 nos. There are no people that have abstained. Moving on to Article 11. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 11. We encourage everyone to stay to the end. We are almost, uh, we're over half-done, but if you do need to leave, like this white Jeep Cherokee, please make sure you turn in your clickers over here by the porta john. You're going over here to the right by the porta john. Thanks for coming. Moving on to Article 11. To see if the town will vote to fix the compensation of the appointed and elected offices provided for a reserve fund and determine the sum of money that the town will raise to appropriate, including appropriations from available funds to the freight charges and expenses of the town, including debt and interest for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020, or take any action relation there, too.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $8,946,289.01 for the compensation of appointed and elected officers, provide for a reserve fund and defray the charges and expenses of the town, including the cost of municipal departments and debt service for the fiscal begin, fiscal year beginning on and retroactive to July 1, 2020. And to meet this appropriation as follows. Raise and appropriate $8,636,289.01. Appropriate $200,000 from free cash. Transfer $110,000 from PEG Access and Cable-related Fund for PEG and cable-related operations.
Second. A motion's made and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there? Legal has told me to pause.
All is set forth in the budget packet.
Second. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? We have a horn. Cause your cars, if you choose to leave, please be careful of the children that are helping running, please. Brent, you're, she's able to speak if you're there, please. We cannot hear them. Brent, Brent, speak to the mic yourself. Testing, one, two, three. Brent, I can't hear you. Can open your mouth, talk. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you weren't talking, kiddo. Sumner?
What?
No, no, it's Brent talking to you, I think, Sumner. It works now.
Testing. Joe Becker, 18 Crestview Drive, Transpanda 156. Given the vote on Article 10, is the $200,000 from free cash still adequate to close the night out with a balanced budget? Or are we not in a balanced situation anymore?
Mr. Nichols?
We are in a balanced situation with the $200,000 of free cash.
Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? We have a horn. We have a card closed. That's the job, Brett.
Brendan Lorenzi, 23 Vista, clicker 158. Sorry. I was just wondering about the non-elected official compensation, um, that dollar amount and the number of town employees that covers. Somebody can explain that to me.
Mr. Nicholson?
Uh, as to the number of town employees that that impacts, I don't have that number in front of me, but that is all of our day-to-day town employees that we have, um, in the community hall building, the community hall annex, all of our police, fire, dispatch, DPW workers, um, everyone at the council and agent building, um, library, and, uh, the recreation department, the safe place department. Um, those are all of our town department employees. I don't have an exact number there. Um, excuse me one second. Uh, per our town treasurer corrector, that's ballpark 160 employees. Full and part-time.
Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please press the green button for yes, for nos, the red button, please. This is on Article 11. You can take off the other way. You can't walk the other way. Yeah, you're holding eyes on out of here. I wanna, I wanna cop on the road. All those ballotted who wish, I will declare the ballot box closed. 242 yeses, 38 nos, eight abstained. Motion passes. We're going with, there's probably a few less people here now because a few left and that's why I wasn't waiting for the 300 number. Moving on to Article 12. Article 12 is to see if the town will vote to pursue, pursuant to MGLC 44, Section 53 F and a half, to raise an appropriate sum of money to the, operate the water and sewer department for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020, or take any action relation there, too.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve the following sums for the operation of the Water and Sewer Enterprise for fiscal year 2021. Salaries, $261,994. Expenses, $1,230, $1,230,398. Debt principal, $190,525. Debt and, debt interest, $35,525. Capital outlay, $595,000. Indirect charges, $188,209.84. Further that of said sums and appropriation of $2,501,651.84 be raised from available departmental receipts, investment earnings and other revenues of the Water and Sewer Department.
Second. A motion's made and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable on this article.
Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. I will declare the ballot box now open. Please cast your ballots. Green for yes, red for no. So folks, at the end of the evening, we will have our, our boys and, and Mr. Ross will help try to get people out of here in a timely fashion. We will proceed forward in the line and we will proceed over here to my right toward the porta john. Everybody will have to leave that way so we can give the, uh, clickers that you have in your car to the, uh, fine folks over there collecting it, so we can hopefully use it at another town meeting, whether it's inside or outside. We plan to use those in the future. We certainly do appreciate everybody coming tonight and everybody helping out. Um, I will declare the ballot box closed. There is 255 in favor, 24 nos, 13 yeses.
Abstained.
13 abstained. Not used to abstaining, I'm sorry. And, uh, I declare this passed. Thank you. We're moving on to Article 13 to see if the town will vote to authorize, authorize. The Board of Selectmen to apply for, accept and expend any grants or donations from fe, state or federal government or private agency, individuals or institutions, or take any action relation there, too.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 13 as printed in the warrant.
Second. Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing no horns. Please, ballots, voting is now open. Please hit green for yes, red for no. I'm going to declare the ballot box closed. 286 yeses, four nos, three abstained. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 14 to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into contracts for the goods and services with duration in excess of the three-year under the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30B, Section 12, Paragraph B, or take any action relation there, too.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 14 as printed in the warrant.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none. All those in favor, please hit green for yes, red for no. Ballots are now open. You shouldn't, you shouldn't vote while you're driving, ma'am. I will declare the ballot box closed. 263 yeses, 23 nos, three abstained. Motion carries. Moving on to, moving on to Article 15 to see if the town will vote to appropriate all funds which become available in the fiscal year 2021 from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Highway, Chapter 90, bond issue proceeds to the, used by the DPW for repairs and maintenance of the town roads in conformance with the Massachusetts General Law and further the town vote and a raise said appropriation by borrowing and authorizing the town treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to issue the bond or note of the town, therefore anticipation of the receipt of said state aid or take any action relation there, too.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 15 as printed in the warrant.
Does this article receive support? Motion been made and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing no horns. Ballots are now open. Please hit green for yes, red for no. I will declare the ballot box closed. 270 yeses, five nos, three abstained. Motion carries. We are moving on to Article 16 to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to purchase and install an electric information sign for the center of Rutland or take any action relation there, too. Is there a motion on this article? Mr. Conacchio, I'd like, would you, would you, uh, this is a citizen's petition.
Uh, Lou Conacchio, 18 Blueberry Lane, Rutland, Massachusetts. Been here since 1973. This is my 46th annual town meeting.
Congratulations.
Clicker number 265. Mr. Moderator, I recommend that we take no action. Mr. Moderator, I recommend that we take no action on this.
Does this motion receive support? A motion has been made and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends no action on this article.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Canacchioli, would you be kind enough to give us an explanation of your motion, please?
It was to have a statue put up in the center of town at me. No. It was for, it was for an electric sign up front, like you see in front of other towns, to announce what's going on in the community, so that people can become more aware and be more concerned and involved in what happens in Rutland.
Can you explain why there was no action at this time, maybe?
My understanding is that some fund, I believe it's a state fund, I think it's the Care Fund, let me ask the Finance Committee, is that what it is, the Care Fund?
The Care, the federal, the federal funds.
A federal fund.
Act is covering the cost of this sign.
So there you are, Mr. Moderator, the federal government. How about that?
Thank you, Mr. Canacchioli. Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none. All those in favor, please, all those in favor of the motion, which was no action, please hit the green button for yes, the red button for no. Wait just a minute, please do not do anything technical difficulty. Okay, folks, on this one, we're going to try something new. All those in favor of Mr. Canacchioli's motion of no action, please beep your horn. Okay, please stop. All those opposed of Mr. Canacchioli's motion, hit your horn. All right, we're going to say this passed by the majority of the horns. Motion carries. Thank you. I mean, hopefully everybody's happy they were able to beep their horn. Moving on to Article 17, to choose the necessary town offices and committees at this time. This is when the moderator, which I have been duly elected to this position, and I thank you all for casting your votes for all of us on the ballot, and as well as myself, thank you for that. At this time, I'd like to thank Ian McKinley, who is not able to be here tonight with us for years of service, as well as Carol for years of service. Carol has chosen to step down from the committee this year, and her position will be filled by, my recommendation would be Mr. Darren Ross will try to fill her shoes for us, and then Ian McKinley will be reappointed by myself as well to stay on the committee. Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to adjourn, and I would again like to thank everyone for coming. I'd like to tell all those people that said it was going to rain in their earlier votes that you were wrong. And I'd like to thank everybody for coming, and I'd like a motion to adjourn.
So move, Mr. Moderator.
All those in favor of adjourning, please beep your horn.